Well, welcome everyone and thank you for attending this candidate forum. I am Corinne Shepherd, President of the Bloomington League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that never endorses any political party or candidate. Our purpose in hosting this forum is to provide you, the public, with the opportunity to learn more about the candidates so that you can make informed voting decisions. Your vote is your power and will result in your voice being heard. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, and early in-person voting is available here at Bloomington Civic Plaza starting September 22nd. Okay, and just as a plug, today is National Voter Registration Day, so if you haven't registered or you need to register, you know someone who needs to register, this is a great reminder, get registered. Okay, we hope that this forum this evening, as well as the candidate videos which are posted on our website and that of the city and replayed on Bloomington TV, will provide you with information that you need to assist you in making your voting decision. For the at-large race with three candidates, your ballot will use ranked choice voting. Our forum tonight is a good opportunity to evaluate your ranked choices. Our city clerk, or someone from our city clerk's office is here this evening to, is available after the forum to answer any questions you may have about ranked choice voting. Thank you, audience, for attending our forum tonight. And thank you, candidates, for your time and effort that you have dedicated to running for office and for participating in this forum. In these days of political polarization, we in Bloomington can be proud of all of our candidates for the efforts they make to run positive campaigns and for demonstrating the civility in this forum that is becoming of the office they seek and that reflects the attitudes and demeanor of our community as a whole. We ask that the members of the audience not clap, cheer, or otherwise do anything that may disrupt the forum or the recording process. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, members of the Voter Services Committee for planning this event. Thank you to the City of Bloomington for the use of the council chambers. Thank you to Bloomington TV for recording and broadcasting this forum on Bloomington TV. This forum will also be posted for viewing online at the League of Women Voters website, on the City of Bloomington website, and on YouTube. This forum will be rebroadcast multiple times on Bloomington TV. And just another plug, we have an event planned for October 12th, and we'll have someone from the Secretary of State's office, October 12th, here in the Black Box Theater from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., talking about Voter Education 101. So watch for more on that and what we'll be doing with that. All right, Martha Mixx is our moderator this evening. She is a highly skilled moderator who has moderated many league forums. She is a member of the Golden Valley League of Women Voters. She will now identify the rules of the forum and will introduce you to the candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. I should turn this on. Thank you. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters and League of Women Voters Minnesota. And our local leagues post complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for political purposes. The recordings of candidate forums in their entirety are the sole property of the League of Women Voters. The purpose of this evening's forum is to hear the candidates for Bloomington's two city council at-large seats discuss issues that are important to residents citywide. All candidates for the aforementioned offices, whose names will be printed on the ballot, have been invited to participate in this forum. A copy of the forum rules was emailed to each candidate. Copies of the forum rules are also posted in the lobby adjacent to this space. We'll try to cover as many issues as possible in the time we have, and if your questions are not addressed tonight, please feel free to contact the candidates directly. The rules and format for tonight's forum, the speaking order was set before the forum and will rotate with each question. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and 30 seconds for closing remarks, and each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer each question. And we have our two league volunteers who are working as timers, and they'll hold up signs to show the candidates when they have 30 seconds left, when they have 15 seconds left, and when they must stop. And you can all see those signs. Great. So this forum will also have maybe one or more lightning, maybe one lightning round where candidates will be requested to answer a question very briefly, either with one sentence or a yes or no reply. As moderator, I'll ask all the questions. League of Women Voters Bloomington, and I determined which questions will be asked in an attempt in good faith to cover the topics of interest indicated by the questions submitted by Bloomington residents to league via email prior to this evening and by you, the attendees during this event. If you'd like to submit a question this evening, please write it on an index card and pass it to one of the volunteers who is collecting those cards. Card collectors, please raise your hands so they know who to, whose attention they should get. So we have three here that I see whose hands are raised. Thank you so much. And serving as question facilitators today are Douglas Claycomb and Nancy Claycomb, members of the League of Women Voters Bloomington, sitting over here. And all submitted questions become the property of the League of Women Voters Bloomington. No campaign material, signs, brochures, cards, buttons, or clothing with candidate information are allowed in the Bloomington Civic Plaza. This forum is being video recorded. Candidates, please speak directly into the microphone so that your responses are heard and picked up by the video. And when you speak, please look out at the audience, not at me, because these are the audience's questions. So we will begin here, introducing the candidates. We have two candidates who are running for a four-year term as city council members at large, Ms. Jenna Carter and Mr. Bruce Colton. And Ms. Carter is a member of the League of Women Voters Bloomington, which is why they have a member from Golden Valley asking the questions. So there's no preference. And candidates in this special election for a two-year term as city council member at large are Mr. Maxwell Collins, Mr. Jonathan Minks, and Mr. Sa Muah. We're going to start with the opening statements by the candidates, and you'll each have two minutes. So we'll begin, I think we're going to be a little bit random, but just remember that we have just the two running for the four-year term and three running for the two-year term. So we'll begin with Maxwell Collins for the opening remarks.
Yeah, thank you for having me here, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters. They do great work on voter outreach. To tell you more about myself, I'm a lifelong resident here in Bloomington. I've been here since 2001, even though I might not look like I've been here as that long, but I was pretty little. I'm also a proud graduate of Kennedy High School. I went to Hamlin University to get my degree in political science and recently just graduated with a master's in public policy where I focused on government and economic development. Some of my priorities, if you haven't heard, is economic development of small businesses. I want to make sure that every, everybody in the city has a chance, if they want to create a small business, are able to thrive here in the city of Bloomington. Community engagement's a huge one as well. The city does a terrific job on doing it, but there's always room for more improvement on that aspect. I want to look at affordable housing. I look at that in two ways, renters and homeownership, and actually a third way, elder care as well. If you just tackle one area, you're not going to fix the whole issue at large. So those are my main three priorities there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Minks.
Thank you for the invitation for tonight. My name is Jonathan Minks. I am a lifelong resident of Bloomington, 50 years, born and raised. I like to call myself the resident for the residents here in Bloomington. After going to high school, Kennedy High School, I joined the Minnesota Army National Guard, and I wanted to go into law enforcement, so I became a military police officer, and I served our state and country for six years doing that. I was also a recipient of the Army Achievement Medal as well. As life seems to take you in other steps, I never thought about getting into politics. Currently, I am a small business owner. I own Johnny Rock Bikes, an old shock, be an old cedar, and I have another store in Hopkins. I've been a small business owner for about 13 years. I would like to continue to see more small businesses come into Bloomington. I would also like to serve my community once again. Currently, I'm on the Bloomington City Park and Recreation Board, which has been very exciting and a great opportunity to serve my community as well, and I look forward to earning your vote November 7th.
Thank you. Next candidate, Mr. Sa Muah.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Thank you to the Bloomington League of Women Voters for putting this forum together, and thank you to all the fellow candidates who have put themselves forward to serve our great city. My name is Sa Muah, it's pronounced "Sa" like a chainsaw, and as many of you may know, I was appointed to the city council this past February. And as I reflect on my experience in the last few months, this has truly been the most remarkable thing that I've done with my life. The connections and conversations that I've had with residents like you has been the most fulfilling thing, and when we work together, we can accomplish amazing goals. And as I reflect on the journey that my wife and I embarked on when we chose Bloomington to be our home eight years ago and start our families, I am happy and proud that Bloomington was the right place. What I have found has gone far beyond my expectations. I've discovered deep relations that connect me back to 1913, when the Pauls on my wife's side settled and started farming Bloomington. And that reflects deeply within me because I've had many conversations with residents who have lived here for 30, 40, 50 years. It is clear to me why they chose Bloomington, and more importantly, why they have stayed in Bloomington. I have eight years down, 42 more to go if I'm lucky. And I know that we are committed to working hard to ensuring that Bloomington prospers for another 50 years. My dream is that when my children and all the children of Bloomington grow up, they look back on their childhood, they remember fondly how amazing Bloomington was and still is, and they choose to come back home and start their own families here. And so I'm excited and ready to honor our history, take on the worries of today, and work to ensure the future of Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we're going to hear from the two candidates running for the four-year terms. We'll begin with Jenna Carter.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. As was mentioned, my name is Jenna Carter, and I am very excited to be here, running for reelection for my current position as one of the two at-large council members for the city of Bloomington. So I live here with my husband, Mike, and we have two children, Dylan and Evelyn, and I actually decided to run for city council in 2019 because I had experience volunteering on the Board of Directors at Veep. And during that time, clients or residents of Bloomington were telling us that the cost of housing was driving food insecurity in their families. Also at that time, I was having a lot of conversations with teachers and social workers in the school district, and I found out that we had over 280 students experiencing homelessness in the Bloomington public schools. So I am not the type of person to hear this type of information and then just take a backseat and not do anything. So I jumped in and got involved with some local campaign work here in Bloomington to advocate for affordable housing policy. And that really was what inspired me to run for city council and commit to the residents of Bloomington to help to make our city more healthy, vibrant, welcoming, and inclusive for all, in a place where children can grow up and thrive and have equal opportunities for success. And so when I ran, my key priorities were really around making sure that we have affordable housing options for people across the income spectrum, making sure that we have updated and accessible parks and recreation amenities, making sure that we have a healthy and safe environment, and then making sure we're supporting small businesses and equitable economic growth. And so I can sit up here proudly tonight and say that we've made tremendous progress on these issues, and that's why I'm running again. I want to continue the momentum that we have created and continue to serve the residents of Bloomington. And with that, I want to thank you all again for coming out tonight. Thank you for everyone up here who decided to run for council and put themselves out there, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters Bloomington for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you. And we'll hear from Bruce Colton next.
Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for this opportunity, my opportunity to talk to you. I can't imagine that I would have been up here. I've done many, many things in my life, but this is a new one for me, and I've got a few years on me right now. That's actually one of the reasons I think that I can identify with the people who are in their homes right now, looking at their tax bill each year and wondering, when is it going to stop and how long can I hold on to the house that I am? So I came to Bloomington 48 years ago, and I remember Bloomington then. I remember looking around for a community that would really serve the needs of my children, myself, give me a nice place to come home to. Yards were clean, green, parks, everything was nice. And guess what? The other thing that was nice, I didn't even think, even as little money as I had, I didn't even think about the tax bill. It was almost inconsequential. That's not the case anymore when the tax bill comes around. I feel it, and I think everybody else feels it, and I hear from them. And so that's one of the reasons that I'm running. The other reason is I think we need to bring the people's voice back into the council chambers, and we need to hear from the people. I have a feeling that incumbency is a problem. You know, when you, government in and of itself, good, bad, or indifferent is probably the biggest danger to your freedom. So I'd like to see government backing off. I'd like to see a little bit more freedom for you, and I'd like to see a preservation of the quality of life in Bloomington and a better, more sane budgeting process. If I can do that, I will have done everything that I need to do, and then I'm going to be looking to stepping down. I'm not going to roost in office. I'm biologically term limited. So thank you very much again.
Thank you. We will now start with the question-answer period where they get one and a half minutes to respond. These are going to be in random order, so they aren't going to be following the same person each time. We'll begin, and Sa Muah will be answering the question first. The question is, what do you think the plan should be if one or more of the bonding referenda do not pass?
Well firstly, I think, myself personally, I support all the ballot questions and bonding questions that are on the ballot this year. I think this is an opportunity for us to relieve the tax burden on taxpayers. And so when we share this with visitors, it allows us to generate the income needed to accomplish three extraordinary projects that only happen once in a generation. Or the other thing, if we don't pass this, we put this solely on the shoulders of taxpayers. And how long is that going to take for us to accomplish the things that people have been asking for for years? And so my question is, can we afford to not take the opportunity to vote yes on the three ballot questions that are on the ballot this year? And I support reducing the burden on Bloomington residents and giving the residents what they've been looking for and asking for for decades. Bloomington was built out in the 70s, and it looks like we haven't updated since the 70s. So it's time for us to get what the residents need and provide what residents need for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenna Carter.
Same question. All right, thank you. Can you repeat the question?
Yes. By the way, anytime you want a question repeated, please ask. What do you think the plan should be if one or more of the bonding referenda do not pass?
Great. Thank you for the question. So I also am in full support. I really hope the voters of Bloomington decide to pass and vote yes on all three projects. All three projects are priorities that have been identified by our community through multiple different engagement processes, and they are amenities that, you know, that people love in Bloomington who currently live here, and they're types of amenities that when businesses are looking to locate their business in a community or when people are looking to become residents of community, they're looking for amenities like a community center, beautiful parks and green spaces where they can bring their families, and, excuse me, and then making sure that we have recreational facilities that meet the needs of today and are updated. And so I really do hope the Bloomington residents vote yes on all three. You know, I think two of the projects, Nine Mile and the community center, those would be a little bit tougher, and we would probably have to go back into our community and ask residents, you know, what are different innovative approaches that we could take to help get these projects funded, because we know there are great needs. For the Bloomington Ice Garden, there are desperate needs. You know, earlier in the mayoral forum, the mayor mentioned that the refrigerant that's used in our ice system is no longer in production. And so we do have to figure out strategy, and either that is going to be taxpayers pay for it. I would also like us to seek some more bonding from the state if that's the case. But at the end of the day, the local option sales tax is the best approach because two-thirds of the cost then would be covered by people who don't live in Bloomington.
Thank you. Jonathan Minks, same question.
Yes, I'm on the fence for... There we go, green button. I'm on the fence for a couple of these projects. As a lifelong Bloomington resident, I skated at BIG, so I have a soft spot for the ice gardens. I think the ice gardens bring revenue into our community with events that happen there probably every other weekend throughout the year, which brings people into our community to spend money at local businesses and restaurants, hotels, and to go shopping. So I'm in favor of the big renovations. The renovations at Creekside, I know Creekside is worn down. I know it's not in the best condition, but a lot of the people I've talked to said it can wait. I don't know where we're going to go if these referendums don't pass. I would hate to see them go back and get tacked on to our already high property taxes. I look at my property taxes, and they're going up every year, and every year they get to be greater and greater. I think that's one of the things we have to figure out is, where can we get the money to pay for all these amenities that the Bloomington residents want? I don't have those answers. Those are the answers that we as a community have to come together with and figure out where we're going to get funding.
Okay, Bruce Colton.
Yes, actually, I hope I'm not controversial, but I'm not in favor of sales tax financing. If you really look at it, and it's a kind of a detailed analysis that you have to do, this 66% paid by other people, it really doesn't in the end end up that way. We play tit-for-tat with other counties and other cities in terms of them raising their sales tax and we raising our sales tax because we don't want to pay theirs and they don't want to pay ours and so forth. So we end up just battling each other, and the sales tax goes up. By the way, I remember lavender money, anybody here? The 3% sales tax, it's only 3%? Well, look at us. Now we're at over, going to be over 9%, and we're leading the way, leading the way. That's definitely not where we should be. We've got, you know, Edina and other counties or cities that are raising their tax. I can see following, trying to keep that parity, but no, I'm not in favor of that. And I say, we need to go back and look at the things that we're doing. If we're dealing with BIG, let's see the cheapest thing we can do to keep that, you know, on support. It could pay for its own. We've got money at the Port Authority that could pay for it. There's many other ways and many other things, approaches that we can take. I'm sorry, I'm not in favor of this sales tax. It hurts business in Minneapolis too, and it's regressive. I can't think of any more negatives against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Maxwell Collins.
So my opinion about the three bond referendums is that I would be for all three of them. If they happen not to be passed, it'd be interesting to go back and try to see what type of like state bonds like Jenna Carter has mentioned to go after, or looking at other resources like from foundations or so forth, if they want to try to cover some of that cost. At the end of the day, it'd be quite bad for us if we wanted to go back to the citizens and try to do property tax towards them. So when it comes to the sales tax, it is actually quite an opportunity that we do not want to miss as a city because, like it has stated, 66%. The U said around 75% when they did their initial study, and that is a lot of money that's not coming from Bloomington residents, and I feel like it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, and Ms. Carter, you'll be doing this one next. What needs to be done in Bloomington to accommodate the legalization of marijuana?
Thank you for the question. So this is a challenging one. We had an initial conversation at our council meeting a couple of weeks ago to start talking about this. So to accommodate the legalization of marijuana is an interesting way to ask the question too. You know, I personally am leaning towards just making it not acceptable or illegal to use marijuana products in public spaces. So right now, the current state law, my understanding is that it has to follow the smoke-free air law, so obviously people can't be, you know, smoking cannabis in restaurants or, you know, the same as tobacco, right? But we also have different options that we can look at at Bloomington. I just think at the end of the day, whether you're walking down the street or you're sitting in a park or you're, you know, at an event, people don't want to smell the smell of marijuana. With that said, you know, if people want to use it in their homes and if they want to be responsible users and aren't driving, you know, I think, you know, that's their prerogative. But I also think as a city, as we look at the tax revenue that we will receive from the sales, that we should dedicate a portion of that tax revenue to education, particularly for youth, around the dangers of cannabis, marijuana use, especially for the developing brain of young people. I do think that that's a public health concern that we should dedicate resources to.
Thank you. Sa Muah.
Thank you. I think there are three things that we have to do with the legalization of cannabis. And the first thing is to ensure that our city and our staff have the right training and tools necessary to handle the influx of change that this is going to bring on. For example, we need to make sure that our police officers have the right training and equipment so that they can handle what happens with the intoxication of marijuana. Without that, we have no way to really combat the issues that come with intoxication, just like when, you know, we dealt with alcohol way back when, when prohibition was lifted. And so the second thing, I think, is we need to ensure that we're protecting the public spaces, just like we do with tobacco and alcohol, so that when you're out in a park, you can enjoy the park as it is. And then lastly, I believe this opens up an opportunity for our business community and entrepreneurs to build successful legal businesses and contribute to Bloomington. And so we need to have the resources ready to support people who want to build strong businesses and contribute to Bloomington.
Thank you. Bruce Colton.
Yes, I'm glad you asked the question the way you did because I believe in the last session, they said how we can benefit from it. I'm sorry, I see absolutely no benefit from the legalization of marijuana. It was a huge, huge legislative mistake for that to happen. The health risks of marijuana, and I know a little bit about this, done a lot of study on it, are incredible. Marijuana is not only a gateway to other drug use. You may not end up taking heavy drugs, but I can guarantee that the heavy drug users all started with marijuana. And it affects the brain in a hideous way, not just what it does to you at the moment, but it is a gateway to schizophrenia. And if you want to look at the studies, you'll see that marijuana right now is a very big health danger to not only the developing mind, but the young mind in general. So I'm completely against it. I say the only thing we can do is educate, educate, educate. If we're getting tax monies, I say yes, use it, all we can do to educate and change this law. It's kind of hard to put the rabbit back in the box, but this is not good. It's not good for our youth, and it's even, we're seeing the effects of it already in increased rates of schizophrenia, schizophrenia and other mental diseases. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maxwell Collins.
So when it comes to accommodating marijuana, I would say that I'm definitely for that. It's a great opportunity for small businesses here in Bloomington to be able to be built and to be developed and thrive off of it. On how I think the city should go about it is like a hybrid approach between alcohol and tobacco. It does intoxicate you. It's not exactly like a cigarette for, say, or having a cigar. We want to make sure that proper procedures are in place so that way we run into, so we don't run into the situations that we do with alcohol. And going along with the public health aspect, we have a great public health department here in the city of Bloomington that could be used for education and making sure that our youth are making the correct decision if they want to use it, what are the consequences of it and so forth, kind of something similar to what the federal government did when it came to campaigning against smoke usage and cigarettes and cigars and so forth.
Thank you. Jonathan Minks.
I think that this topic is going to be up for a lot of discussion within our city. We need to have a good policy and a good plan for rolling this out, and I really hope our city can accommodate that. I think we should run it like we do with liquor stores. I believe that liquor stores can't be within certain areas of schools and churches, so I would be in favor of doing that as well. But I really hope our city can have a good policy and education regarding the sale and use of marijuana in the city. I believe some of the other things that happen with the smoking is, a lot of times smoking, I believe in the city, you have to be 25 feet from doorways. I would hope that they enforce that as well, as well as the smoking too. In certain bars and areas, they have a smoking section. I would hope they would do that as well. I think this is a hot topic for the city, and I just truly hope that they roll it out correctly.
the city, and I I just truly hope that they roll it out correctly and look at all the aspects. I'm also in favor of for the small business and entrepreneurship. I think if they do it right, it could bring a lot of tax revenue to the city.
Thank you. And we'll begin this next question again with Jonathan. What would be your sales pitch for why young families should choose Bloomington as a place to reside? And what policies, if any, would you promote to attract young people to our
Well, I thank you for the question. I think I think one of the the questions that was in the last forum was about the larger yards. That is one of the key things I love about Bloomington is we have large yards. And we looked at houses all across the Twin Cities when we were raising our family. I have two, two young children, six and eight years old. And we looked all over the Twin Cities, and everywhere we looked, the yards got smaller and smaller and smaller. And that's one of the reasons why we stayed in Bloomington, and we added on to our home to make Bloomington our home moving forward. I think Bloomington is a good place to bring a family to. We're close to everything. We're centrally located. I do, I do think it's a great place to raise a family. We have lots of green spaces and parks. We go hiking down at Mount Springs and Parker's Picnic Ground quite a bit to take advantage of that natural resource. And I do truly think we have a lot of great parks and amenities for families.
Thank you. Mr. Colton.
Surprise, I wasn't ready. Actually, I actually agree with what Jonathan said. When I looked around at a place to settle, I looked at Bloomington. I love the way it looked. I loved the yards. I loved the green yards. There was a lot of underground wells at that time, which would have been capped by government. And that, it was a very beautiful place to live, and I love the large yards. That was the main reason, I think, when I look back, that I decided to settle in Bloomington. I'd like to maintain that character. I'd like to maintain it for all the people coming into Bloomington. I'd like my children to enjoy that if they choose to live in Bloomington. We have to understand that when we start changing the nature and character of the place you live, they are basically kind of walking over your initial decisions, your rights to to choose the life you, I mean, I could have lived in Minneapolis in an urban setting if I wanted to. I didn't choose Minneapolis. I chose Bloomington. So I love what Bloomington is right now. I love how, I mean, I loved it when I really loved it when I first moved here. I really love it to stay as much as and as close as possible as it is right now. And I really would like us to just accommodate with better jobs, better employment, like we talked about the technology employment, training our students. Let's make Bloomington better, but the same.
Thank you. Maxwell Collins.
So my sales pitch to young families in Bloomington, I would say that our schools are a great example. Our schools are one of the more highly ranked in the metro. They've done a very good job. The city services are also impeccable when it comes to our snow being plowed, our water being one of the top ranked in the country. When it comes to our green spaces, our natural spaces are a huge one as well. We have more parks per resident per capita, I believe, in all of Minnesota. We have tremendous access when it comes to transportation. And if you want to go have a night in downtown for, say, you're not too far away from it either. So those would be some of the things that I would tell younger couples and people who have families, come to Bloomington. It's a great place to live for all those various reasons.
Thank you. Samua.
Thank you. This, this question hits hard with me, because I'm living that right now. I have a five-year-old, I have a three-year-old, and I have a five-month-old. So if you don't think I'm busy, I'm pretty busy. And my wife and I chose Bloomington because of where we're located and the opportunities that we have here. And so if I was gonna pitch someone on state, on moving to Bloomington with a small family, I would say we're good, but we have room to be great. I say that because we don't provide our young families enough opportunities to stay in Bloomington. In fact, we give our young families more opportunities to leave Bloomington. When I want to take my kids swimming in the winter, we have to drive down to Shakopee. When I want to take my kids to a children's program at a community center, we have to go to Edina, we have to go to Eden Prairie, we leave Bloomington. So at some point, if we give people enough reason to leave Bloomington, they will stay gone. But what gives me courage, what gives me strength to keep moving is that we are doing things right now to give people the reason to stay. Our strategic plan, which I was a resident member of the Corps Planning Committee, we set a plan that has a vision for the future, to give families that opportunity to live, work, and play and raise their families here. And so we're good, we're getting great. Stick around and you'll see what happens.
Okay, Jenna Carter.
I also feel like I could talk for about ten minutes on this one. You know, we also moved here when my children were, I think, two and seven, or two and six. And we were, you know, I'm a military brat, and then I came up here for grad school. My husband and I decided that this is where we were really want, we wanted to establish our roots. And when we started looking around for houses, we fell in love with Bloomington, big yards. A third of the city is parks and open space, which is just remarkable. And so now, when I talk to young families and I talk to, I've talked with them about why they came to Bloomington, or for those who are considering moving, I mean, I'm like, it's a big, small town. That's really the vibe that we have in Bloomington, and it's amazing. We have tons of green space, as I mentioned. We have great schools, and it is an amazing location. Easy access to the airport, the Twin Cities, if you want to go to events there, easy to get out of the city and and go to parks, some of our state parks. It's just a really wonderful location, and we have a lot of great amenities. And and as to specific things that, you know, I think that we have to kind of keep our foot on the the gas in terms of doing, we have to continue to implement our Park System Master Plan. We, for the first time ever, now have a Natural Resources Manager in Bloomington to preserve and restore our natural spaces. We gotta continue to fund that program. And then we need to have an even stronger focus on neighborhood node revitalization. And we can do that now that we've shifted economic development out of the HRA and into the Port Authority and are launching a five-year strategic planning process now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, and we'll begin with Bruce Colton. What can the city do to make sure that the BIPOC, Black Indigenous People of Color community is better engaged?
the issue, it gets me sort of in in the heart, because what I see in in government and in America is a, is basically racializing everything that we deal with. We're all categorized into not only races, but types and people. And I just, you know, if somebody moves in next to me, I don't care who they are or what they are, you know, if they've, you've got a good job and they come to Bloomington to live, please move in next to me. I'll be your best neighbor. But I just think all of this quote engagement and so forth and kind of bending over for for this sort of extra reaching out is a path to recognize race, you know, rather than living e pluribus unum as a community of people. And that bothers me a lot. So it's a hard question for me, and as I think you can tell. But I just think that we need to become Americans first. And that comes, I've come from a family, my wife is Icelandic. We're Americans first. Our cell, we celebrate American holidays.
Thank you. Maxwell Collins.
So this also kind of comes to more of one of my priorities is community engagement. And the city is on the pathway of doing better on that aspect. But there's always room to be better and to become great. And one of the things that I would like the city to be doing is going out into those BIPOC communities, engaging with residents there, and going to apartments that predominantly have a lot of BIPOC members and so forth, and trying to actually make sure that their input into city government and into the policies and how they want to see their city are actually valued and listened to and actually considered when it comes to policies here. Because at end of the day, when it comes to certain policies that we do make, it impacts their lives, too. So we should do our best on actually trying to make sure that they have a voice to be heard.
Thank you. Jenna Carter.
Thank you. So, you know, I'm really proud of the work that we've been able to do to engage people across Bloomington and specifically communities of color. And when you look at the demographics of Bloomington, it's, our community is changing. It's changed significantly over the past several decades. I think it was around nineteen seventy-one percent of Bloomington identified as non-white, and now we're, I think, close to thirty-five percent. If you look at our school district, over half of the students in our school district are students of color. And it is important to make sure that we are engaging all of our residents. And when we see that there are some residents who aren't engaging with us, we need to ask ourselves why. And we need to talk to them directly and not make assumptions about why they're not engaging with us. When the pandemic hit, we actually had community advisory groups to help us roll out information. We had one for seniors. We had one for the Spanish-speaking community. We had one for the Black community. And we learned things just by talking to residents in our community about things we need to do differently, translating resources, translating our website, right? These are things that maybe we would have thought of, maybe we wouldn't have. And that's why it's so important to make sure we're in, we are engaging everyone. And when we're not, we have to ask why. I will say, well, I could go on and on about this topic, and I have fifteen seconds left. But we have had, we've, we've implemented a lot of projects and strategies to better engage with residents of color. And I'm, again, really proud of it and happy to talk to anybody offline about that.
Thank you. Jonathan Minks.
I think the city has already kind of taken steps in that area with the, I believe there's a new equity person that is handling equity in our, in our city. As a small business owner, I see people of all different types come into my store, and I try to treat them the same, no matter what they look like or who they are. My goals, just like when I have people come into my store, I had some kids come in from the neighborhood, and they didn't have any bikes. So I said, you come here on Saturday and clean the parking lot, and I'll give you a bike. I think being kind to our community and teaching valuable life skills about how we can help each other is probably the underlying silver lining in our community. I'd rather not look at people, and I know some people will say otherwise, but when I was in the military, we were taught to see everybody as green. We looked at people on the inside for their quality and their character, and I'd like to do the same thing within our city.
Thank you. Samua.
I think this goes beyond just the city doing something when it comes to communicating with all residents. It comes down to all of us. Diversity, equity, and inclusion, to me, what it does is it facilitates conversations. And they're going to be difficult and uncomfortable. But without these conversations, how can we know each other? And I believe that if we pretend that racial and cultural differences do not exist, that is very naive. Let me put it to you this way. When you meet someone new and you want to be friends with them, do you simply pretend they have no past, no history, you just move forward? I know I don't. I want to know where they grew up, who their parents are, what are their experiences? Because to me, that is what allows me to connect with you. And without an understanding and a connection, we cannot be friends, we cannot be people, we cannot be a community. And so diversity and equity, diversity, equity, inclusion means that we are learning and knowing about each other. I said this often this year, and it rings true every time. We all come from our own past and histories, but the one thing we have in common is a shared future here in Bloomington. And so it's time that we take the time to know each other, so that we can build our future here together.
Thank you. The next question, it's how do you envision the city's role in addressing the causes of climate change and mitigating its consequences on city infrastructure? And we will begin with Maxwell Collins.
So on how I envision the city when it comes to climate change and its infrastructure, I kind of look at it in a couple of different ways. The first way is doing our job on making sure our green spaces and our parks are actually are healthy. The green spaces that we don't use for like softball fields or for kickball or anything like that, be transitioned back into native vegetation and native wildlife. That is a key way to make sure that our ecosystem's healthy. And one way is, is that bond referendum on question three, I believe, that actually talks about nine mile, that does a tremendous amount of work on making sure that gets done. The other way is making sure that the city's infrastructure itself, like the buildings, like the street, like the cars, the vehicle fleet are transitioned into more renewable sources of energy, especially when more technologies come out to make it more, more possible every day. And also making sure that residents are included, try to figure out pathways. If a resident wants to actually throw up solar panels on their roofs, we can try to get funding from the state government or from the federal government or nonprofits that actually help facilitate that. Because even at end of the day, as a city, we can do a lot, but we still need help from our residents to do so.
Thank you. Bruce Colton.
Yes, well, I'm an engineer. I got my electrical engineering degrees at the University of Minnesota, went on through PhD. And so I deal with facts. And, you know, the facts are very important to me. Truth is very important to me. The fact that everybody would like to say that there's a consolidated opinion on climate change causing, well, why did they change from global warming to climate change? They're, they're manipulating this issue. There are both natural and anthropogenic causes for global warming. It's, you know, one solar flare, you know, can reverse, you know, you know, years of carbon dioxide, you know, containment. And carbon dioxide is not a pollutant. It creates better agriculture. It's the food for green masses. There's so much to say on this subject. All I can say is that this, we don't want to have government fiddling around in this subject. We don't want to have government pushing technologies like electrical vehicles because they think that's climate-friendly, which it is not. If you look at the facts, you have to go to the facts, you have to look for truth, and you'll see that government is the last organization I want working this problem. I'm sorry.
Jenna Carter.
Thank you. So the city itself is a major contributor to greenhouse gases, and so I do absolutely believe that we have a role. Prior to the current city council, in 2017, the city established a sustainability commission, and they have a pretty robust work plan every year and have been doing incredible work. We have declared a climate emergency in Bloomington. We are a green step city. We actually just received an award from the League of Minnesota Cities for the work that our city did on the bulky item program in our garbage and recycling program. We, in addition, in order to address the greenhouse gas problem that we do have, not just in Bloomington, but everywhere, some of the major contributors to greenhouse gases are buildings, so commercial and residential, as well as the transportation sector. And we have implemented two new programs, so large building benchmarking that, so commercial buildings can see their, their impact and their energy use, as well as time of sale disclosures. We've changed, again, we've made changes to our curbside cleanup program. We implemented organics. When the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency came to us at city council, they let us know fifty percent of what's going in the Burnsville landfill are organics. And so this is an important thing for us to do, even if Hennepin County had, you know, made it a requirement, it still is the right thing for us to do. We are beginning to look at solar projects on city buildings. I mentioned the natural resources position we have at the city. And my time is up. So I'll stop, and I wasn't even done.
Thank you. Samua.
Thank you. I think when we hear the word global and global warming, global environmental change, it makes it feel like we're small and insignificant, we don't need to do anything. But when a contingent from our sister city can jump on a plane in Japan and be in the US here in Bloomington in less than fifteen hours, that means we are part of the global community. And so we need to do our part as a community member, just like you would in your neighborhood with your neighbors, to help and support each other. And as the third largest city in the metro, we have a responsibility and the right to influence and lead the way, not only for the metro, but for the state of Minnesota, when it comes to preserving our natural resources and our green spaces. And this not only honors the history of Bloomington, because our forefathers had the thought to preserve a third of the city for green space and parks, and to not do anything to ensure that the next generation has the same opportunity, would be to go against what the people who have built this city have tried to do for so long. And so I know that I will take advantage of the programs and, and funding that And so I know that I will take advantage of the programs and, and funding that is available from the state and the federal government to make sure that we are leading the way when it comes to preserving our environment and giving the next generation the opportunity to experience the same green spaces that we have today.
Thank you. And this next one will be for Jonathan Minks, the final one.
Could you repeat the question again?
I sure can. How do you envision the city's role in addressing the causes of climate change and mitigating its consequences on city infrastructure?
Sure. I think as a city, we always need to be looking at ways to be more green, and how do we get there within the city? I've had this question asked to me, asked of me multiple times, and I don't have all the answers. I know a lot of these questions are answered at state and federal levels, but I think that's the little things that we need to do in our community that can help out. The little things like recycling. You may not like it, but Bloomington Cleanup Days, I think, is a great project for recycling and getting things out of yards and cleaning up our yards. I know there's a lot of talk about the, the food, food waste in the recycling and how people aren't using that. I think we've done a lot of things to try to get there. I think we need to continue to focus on that and try to get better at what we're doing. I know a lot of people are unhappy with the garbage program, but I can see what, why they went that route, because they wanted to have less trucks on the streets. I don't think we're at a time where we're going to get rid of all the vehicles in Bloomington. I don't think we're going to get rid of the airport. But we do have a big project ahead of us on this, but I think we need to look at the little things that will make the biggest impact on a city council.
Thank you. The next question is going to be about the fire department. Bloomington has hired 18 new full-time fire department staff based on receiving a three-year grant. How do we pay for the staffing after the grant expires? And this would be for Mr. Colton.
Well, obviously, it's going to have to be paid by property taxes and any costs that we can find to economize in, in those areas without jeopardizing any of the safety and security that we expect from our police and fire departments. But no organization is sacrosanct. Everybody has a waste. Everybody can find something to reduce the cost. So we have to, we have to do that. We're going to have to, you know, bear up. We're getting this little respite between the time that we put these people on full-time, but as I understand, it was a necessary move that we had to make. Fire trucks were going out on, not staffed with firemen, and so the volunteer thing didn't seem to be working. But let's look for some cost savings in this. Police and fire are not sacrosanct organizations apart from the budget process. So I say, citizens, we're just going to have to pay for what we need in safety and security. It's one of those essentials, and let's try to have money savings in places where we don't need it, so that we have the ability to fund fire and police. And that would be just what I would say.
Thank you. Samoa.
Thank you. I, I fully support the staffing done with our fire department. When chief came and he requested these, he put together a very detailed reason why we need full-time firefighters here in Bloomington. I think residents have been asking for that. When I was part of the Bloomington Leadership Program in 2019, I was shocked that a city of 80-some thousand people had no full-time firefighters. And we can put off investing in our communities for so long, but eventually the piper comes calling, and today is that day. And just yesterday, during our city council meeting, I posed this question. As we're having these budget conversations, we know that this is going to be, we're going to lose this funding in the next few years, so we need to start preparing now. We can't wait for 2026 to come and then be shocked that all these firefighters are coming onto a payroll, and now taxpayers start funding this. And so we need to start creating the plan now, preparing the funding and getting our city ready to take on the influx of costs that this will bring. But it is a cost that is worth bearing because of the services that we have from our firefighters. Our fire department is second to none, and I will continue to invest in our police and fire, because they are the lifeblood of our city to ensure that we can move around and experience each other safely. Thank you.
Maxwell Collins.
So when it comes to the fire department, I'm fully in supportive of making sure that all those members are there and for any future expansion that we might need as a city of Bloomington. At the end of the day, we should not mess around with our public safety, and two of those is our, our police force and our fire department, because they bring in the essential services that a city and that its residents always expect of. So we would just have to bear up and actually just pay the property taxes, but do so, planning so in the future, instead of having it be a surprise in 2026.
Thank you. And then the next one would be to Jonathan Minks.
I 100% support our police and fire departments. I think about this question, and I think about what I've done internally as a small business owner and what I've had to do the last few years with cutting costs, cutting staff, trimming back my hours. I've had to get creative in running a business, and I think the city is like running a business. We will have to get creative with these expenses, but we truly do need a fire department that's full-time. Being one of the largest cities in the state, I'm surprised we didn't have one earlier. We have the Mall of America to look after. We support the airport as well, and we have high expectations for our public safety. I don't know where we'll get the money to support this fire department after this grant comes out, but I think as a future city council electee, that would be a top priority to make sure that we can fund them 100%, and it doesn't impact the rest of the residents.
Thank you. Jenna Carter.
Thank you. So shortly after I got on city council, I was talking to my brother-in-law, who's a firefighter in Des Moines, and I was telling him how Bloomington had one of the largest paid-on-call fire departments in the country, and he just was shocked. He could not believe it. Well, it turns out, I very quickly learned that it was not working well. So there was a point in 2021, I think we were short 50 firefighters. We had ladders going out with one or two firefighters on them. Half of the crews that were going out were rookie crews. I mean, we just, it was, it was, to the point that everybody has made. It was an absolutely necessary investment, and it will continue to be an absolutely necessary investment in our community. Oh, and the other part I was going to say was that there are metrics that we look at for our fire department, and there are generally accepted response times, and we also were not meeting those. And so, so I'm in full support, and, and we are going to run out of safer grant dollars. It sounds like we are going to apply again, which I think will be helpful. I also think it would be great if we looked at, to the state, we get local government aid. I'm not 100% sure of what the parameters are around that, but maybe they could help us in funding our fire department or some other resources. But at the end of the day, these are basic fundamental services that are a top priority for the residents of Bloomington, and so we will need to fund them.
Thank you. We're going to just kind of do a quick lightning round with, you know, just maybe a one or two sentence answer. And we will begin with Jenna Carter. For the safety of cyclists and pedestrians, do you support traffic calming?
Yes.
Okay. Samoa.
Yes, and we need to do more work to understand the traffic cycles in Bloomington.
All right. Jonathan Minks.
As a cyclist and a cyclist shop owner, I would like to make it more accessible and reevaluate some of the, the lane processes really quickly. I hear a lot of people say that they miss having that lane to ride in because cars would actually go around them, and now they're getting buzzed quite frequently. So, yes.
All right. And then we have Bruce Colton. Oh, well, it was for the safety of cyclists and pedestrians, do you support traffic calming? Always feel free to ask the question again if you didn't hear it, you know, because there's many people you kind of...
Thank you. I, I think we really have to look at it very, very carefully, and I saw the meeting last night in which this subject was discussed, and I saw a lot of, sorry, I seem to be so out of sync with everybody. I saw a lot of misinformation being fed in terms of a statistic of...
Like one or two cents.
Of how, of how, how this affects lowering the speed limit to 25 and how much that affects, you know, traffic accident. There was some falsity there, so I'm still out on it.
All right. And then Mr. Collins.
I would say yes, and also look at other ways for infrastructure upgrades to be able to accommodate bicyclists.
Okay. And then we're going to ask the next one. Do you support ranked choice voting? And we'll begin with Mr. Minks. Jonathan Minks. Do you support ranked choice vote, do you support ranked choice voting?
I am not a fan of ranked choice voting.
And Ms. Carter.
I was supportive of putting ranked choice voting on the ballot so that residents in Bloomington could vote on whether or not they wanted ranked choice voting, and they did vote in support, and so we have implemented it, and, and so, you know, the residents spoke, even, even if it was a slim, you know, margin, like, that's how it works when we vote.
Bruce Colton.
I'm not a fan of ranked choice voting. Anything that was implemented by voters can also be unimplemented by voters, and I think after they have an experience with it, they might not be so in favor of it. It's very complicated and tedious and...
Samoa.
I support the choice of Bloomington voters.
And then Maxwell Collins.
I'm in supportive of ranked choice voting.
Thank you. Okay. And then for the next question, we're going to begin with Mr. Colton. Do we have enough affordable housing in Bloomington? If so, what measures would you take to stop future development? If not, how do you encourage it, and where do you put it? Yes.
Sorry, just clear a frank question. Is this a lightning round, or is this...
Oh, good, no, this is not a lightning round. This'll, this'll be a minute and a half. I apologize.
Okay.
Thanks for asking that. Also, if I forget to call on you for a question, make sure you raise your hand, because I never know. So we'll begin with Bruce Colton for this.
Okay. I believe that if we don't have enough affordable housing in Bloomington, I'd say we don't have enough affordable housing in Bloomington for new residents coming into Bloomington. I think that we have, splitting up the lots, altering the character and nature of Bloomington is not the way to try to generate affordable housing. The thing, reason we came here was because they had large lots. So if we want to start rezoning and making, putting too little houses on those lots, that's, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. Again, I could live in an urban, crammed-in scenario if I wanted to, but I don't want to. Now, we might have to deal with this issue to keep Bloomington residents who are currently Bloomington in Bloomington, because as we're taxed out of our houses, those people might want to stay in Bloomington, and then we need to have affordable senior living for those people. But that's kind of like my take on it. I, I think that we have to be very careful about how we protect the quality of life, the thing that brought us to Bloomington in the first place. So I'm very skeptical, skeptical about ramming through a lot more affordable housing and the problems that also result from that as well.
Jonathan Minks.
It's a great question on affordable housing. I think there's a number of factors that play into that. I think currently with our economy, with interest rates, that is a big hindrance to have affordable housing. I think the housing market has kind of tanked for a little bit. I'm also not in favor of splitting up yards in Bloomington to get more houses in that might make it more affordable. I think that's part of the, the character of Bloomington is our yards and our, and our neighborhoods. I think if you look at it, a lot of people can afford to get into Bloomington if they go to the east side. I think there's a lot more smaller houses, which are more affordable on the east side compared to the west side. I don't see the west side getting small 1,000-square-foot homes put in over there, nor do I think there's room to do that currently. It is a great question. I think we need to look at it further, but I do think affordable housing is a hot topic and something we need to work as a community together.
Thank you. Jenna Carter.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Do we have enough, do we have enough affordable housing in Bloomington? If so, what measures would you take to stop future development? If not, how do you encourage it, and where do you put it?
Okay, so I think that we have made great progress on affordable housing in Bloomington. Prior to my time on council, the city council passed the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, and it's a really great policy to incentivize developers to integrate affordable units into their market rate developments. And we have seen pretty huge success in that approach, and we've recently revisited our Opportunity Housing Ordinance just to make sure we're refining it as we learn. I do, you know, I always like to remind people when we're talking about affordable housing, affordable housing is typically around 60% or less of the area median income. So for a family of four, that's a family bringing in $75,000 a year. I just like to ground people in those numbers, because I think oftentimes the term affordable housing gets a bad rap. And we're talking about, I think the mayor says this, housing that people can afford. As, was that the 30-second sign? Sorry. Okay. I did want to speak to the, the changing in zoning. I actually was a no vote on that, mostly because, I mean, I, I do think that, you know, we have these wonderful lots in Bloomington, but I also am just, I'm not convinced that it's going to create affordable homeownership opportunities for people. You know, we saw one developer propose townhomes that were going to be for a million dollars. And so I just, I'm supportive of most of the changes that were made, but not necessarily all of them.
Thank you. And Maxwell Collins.
Do I think that Bloomington has enough affordable housing? I would say no, we need more as a city. You can see that through the market rate rentals that renters have to do, but when I also talk about affordable housing, I talk about homeownership, and that is a key way to get generational wealth building. And when you have a generation that is in their 20s and 30s who can barely afford to even get a single-family home in the first place, we need to make sure that as a city, we can try to provide them resources to get on that pathway to be able to do so. And also look at the aspect of elder care. When we're talking about older generations trying to live in their homes, how can we accommodate that and make sure that they're still independent, but at the same time, make sure that nursing homes or, um, senior living apartments are also at prices that are also sustainable as well.
Thank you. Samoa.
I think this is a great question, because Bloomington has unique challenges that not all cities have. Bloomington is a built-out city, and so we don't have the opportunity like cities like Lakeville or Plymouth have, where they can just go open up another farm field and develop houses. And so that means that we have to be creative in how we can give people the opportunity to call Bloomington home. And to me, that boils down simply to supply and demand. There are more people who want to live here than there are available homes. If it was simply an issue of space, outstate Minnesota would be filled with people. But the fact is, people want to live in Bloomington, people want to start their families here, and so what can we do to provide the opportunity? We've done a lot of work with our renter, with our rentals, with our Opportunity Housing Program that was mentioned, that's allowed a variety of people from different income spectrum to call Bloomington home, but it's that homeownership piece that I'm interested in. As a first-generation American, I saw exactly what happens when immigrants have the opportunity to buy a house. It created stability for me and my siblings, it gave my parents the opportunity to have upward mobility. And as the third-largest city in, in Minnesota, we have great relationships with our legislatures. We need to leverage and lobby on behalf of the residents and people who want to live in Bloomington to ensure that we have the right tools necessary to provide housing opportunities and homeownership here in Bloomington.
Thank you so much. You know, there are so many questions I have, that I think I'm going to just give one question, and that is, I can't ask all the questions I have, and I, I hope the audience will talk to the council members and council candidates, I'm sorry. And so if, is, is there a question you wished that you were asked tonight? And if so, you know, what, is there a reason why? If you could explain that. So what do you wish was asked, which question do you wish was asked tonight, and, and why? Give you a second. Well, let's, we'll begin with Jonathan Minks.
I think one of the questions that was asked in the earlier forum was the Bloomington Master Park Plan. I currently am on the Bloomington Park Board, and it has been exciting being on that board. I'm very excited about where the park plan is going. I'm very excited about where the park plan is going. Uh, Trepout is gonna be great. I've actually played broom ball there throughout my life. I was kind of sad to see it be turned into a mountain bike park, but the last time I brought my family to a mountain bike park, we had to go all the way to Cottage Grove. Smith Park, I'm excited about Smith Park. I was, uh, very strong about making that into an obstacle course there, and, uh, the board went ahead with that and passed it on to the city council. All of our parks in general, Running Park, I grew up there as well. That was a great park and still is a great park, and there's lots of community engagement regarding our park system. I think we are truly blessed with all the natural resources we have regarding parks and forestry in the city, even along the river bottoms. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenna Carter.
Uh, such a good question. I love it. Um, you know, I think I would have, I wanted a question related to the work that we're doing to support small businesses in Bloomington. I think we've made a lot of prog, progress over the past couple of years, um, and really have been deepening our engagement with small business owners in Bloomington. Uh, we made a pretty significant change by moving, um, economic development from the HRA to the port, um, and we are gonna be launching a five-year strategic plan, and, and one of the city staff actually used the term, we're gonna level the playing field. I think there's recognition that there's been a lot of attention paid, uh, to the South Loop area for many years, and rightfully so. There's a lot of development opportunity there, but it's really time to start focusing on small businesses in Bloomington and revitalizing our neighborhood nodes. Um, so we now are providing one-on-one assistance to support city, uh, to support, um, uh, business owners getting through that city application and permitting process. Uh, we're providing support for grants and other resource support, so Europolis is a great example of helping them apply for, uh, a recent grant. Um, we've updated the city webpage with new resources. We're highlighting businesses on city platforms. Uh, we now have a Welcoming Wednesday, um, so that, uh, small business owners or people who want to launch a business can come in and get free business technical assistance. We also have a Welcome to Bloomington program to welcome the new businesses that choose to be here, also exit interviews for businesses that are leaving so we can learn about why they are, um, and make improvements. I could go on and on. We're launching a Small Business Development Center. We have a facade improvement program, um, and we're looking into a local purchasing prioritization, uh, project too. So, uh, would love to talk to all about that work more.
Thank you. Uh, Maxwell Collins.
So the one question that would come to mind is asking me about public transit within the city of Bloomington, and the reason for that is I mainly see that a lot of our bus routes, we only have a couple bus routes that actually go inner-city. And when I talk about inner-city from like, for say, from Jefferson to Kennedy, not actually going from down, from, let's say, City Hall all the way to downtown, and then for you just to get back to another end of the city. We need to see more inner-city connections because that actually provides people more resources for jobs, more resources to get around, and are, and most of those connections, when I've looked at the larger market, uh, when other cities have implemented it, it's actually more profitable, and dare I even say profitable, compared to other transit systems that we actually have, uh, here in, in the Twin Cities.
Okay. Um, Mr. Colton.
Uh, well, I think you did a thorough job of asking questions. You kept me on my toes, of course, uh, but, um, uh, I would have liked to talk a little bit more about budgeting and the budgeting process. Uh, I think that, uh, most of the, uh, government organizations, including Bloomington, really use, uh, kind of a, uh, old-fashioned budget process, which is incremental budgeting. What did I spend? What did I get last year? Let me increment it this year, or let's spend for sure what we had last year so we don't lose any of the budget that we had. Um, I would like to see, um, uh, more modern ways of budgeting, uh, lifecycle budgeting, uh, budgeting that looks at how many people are served by the dollars that you spend. Uh, just actually kind of radically change how we look at each department to rebudget those departments, zero-based budgeting, uh, to try to find some dollars that are kind of sitting there languishing in the, um, in the balls of Bloomington. So, uh, that's what I would do, uh, if elected. I would really take a hard look at how we budget, looking for those dollars and try to flatten the ten percent annual increases forecasted for the next, uh, ten years. You know, in eight years, that's double the taxes you're paying today. I want to get your taxes down. That's what I'm all about.
Thank you. Um, Samoa.
Thank you, and I'm glad Mr. Colton brought this up because I'm surprised that it didn't get up, brought up because we're in the midge, middle of budget season right now. And during the pandemic, I had the fortunate, or some say unfortunate, opportunity to serve on the Community Budget Advisory Committee. And our role as a committee was to literally cut our budget down to bare bones to get people through the pandemic. And as we've come out of the pandemic and starting to get back to our regular lives, it's clear to me that the residents of Bloomington do not want bare-bones services. There is a level and quality of life here in Bloomington that people expect, and I believe that when you wake up and you don't have to worry about your water turning on, the firefighter showing up, that means that we have done our job here in Bloomington. Because we are at a crossroads right now where we need to ensure that our seniors can retire comfortably in their homes, but continue to make Bloomington the top choice for families. And that to me means that we are strategically investing in what makes Bloomington great. As Wayne Gretzky once wisely said, "We must skate to where the puck is going, not to where it's already been." And so I will continue to work with my city council members and our mayor to look and create opportunities and look creatively at how we can work our budget to meet the needs of all Bloomington residents. Thank you.
All right. And now we're gonna hear the closing remarks from, uh, the two candidates running for the four-year terms. We'll begin with, um, Bruce Colton.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to say that, uh, I want to say something to Jenna Carter and to you all, that, um, this is a thankless job, and I appreciate the fact that you've tried to do your best in this job. I really do. I mean that sincerely. I just want to say that, um, I just disagree with your opinions and where you think emphasis should go, but I thank you, and you have really done your best to try to put your input into this. Please vote for me.
Jenna Carter.
Uh, well, thank you for that kind of comment. I appreciate it. Um, I also just again want to express my deepest gratitude for everybody, um, coming tonight into the League of Women Voters Bloomington. It really truly has been an honor to serve our community over the last almost four years now. Never could I imagined on January 2020 that we would then, you know, soon be facing a pandemic and the murder of George Floyd and the civil unrest. Um, so it's been challenging, times thankless, um, but it really truly has been an honor. And I do ask for your support in this upcoming election. Early voting opens September 22nd, election day November 7th. Please vote for me.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from the three, uh, candidates who are running for the two-year term. Uh, Samoa.
Well, thank you all for being here and thank everyone for watching. I think at the end of the day, your vote is a direct reflection of the investment that you want to see in Bloomington. And I've worked hard to help Bloomington well before I was on city council, and I continue to work hard as your city council member. And as I said before, we all have our own pasts and histories, but what we have in common is a shared future here in Bloomington. And so I'd be honored to earn your vote to continue growing our resilient community. Thank you.
All right. Um, Jonathan Minks, Minks.
Thank you for the invitation tonight again. It would be an honor to serve my community once again. I think I've said it in the past, in the old days, it was the farmer, the schoolteacher, and the general store owner who represented the residents. As a small business owner and a lifelong resident, I think I meet all those checkmarks. I hope you can vote for me November 7th.
Thank you. And, um, Maxwell Collins.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity to actually speak to the residents of Bloomington more directly. Um, I want your guys' support in the upcoming election on November 7th because I feel like my, uh, my educational background and being a master's in public policy and, um, my experience as a park and recreation commissioner from 2016 to 2020 will go a long way, and if you want to do the investment correctly in the city of Bloomington, please vote for me.
Thank you, and thank you to the candidates, uh, for participating in this forum and your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. Thank you to the city of Bloomington for technical expertise and the use of council chambers. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Bloomington for sponsoring this forum, and thank you to all the volunteers this evening. Uh, again, this forum is video-recorded, and you will be able to find links on the, posted on the city of Bloomington website and on the League of Women Voters Bloomington website. It'll be reg, broadcast on Bloomington cable TV until election day. Remember to vote November 7th, and, um, real quickly, if you need to register to vote, um, check with www.minvotes.org, and, uh, you, there's voting early and voting in person, and you can find out more information about the hours for that. Um, let's again give them a big round of applause. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And audience, you're formally, uh, invited to visit informally with the candidates and league members immediately following this.